I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mike?
Mr. Zach Bieber.
President.
Mr. Tim Clayton.
President.
Mr. David Anderson.
Yep.
Ms. Amy Blaker.
Here.
And Mr. John Derwinski.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Nick Bellar.
Here.
Mr. Robert, I'm sorry, Chief Robert Byrd.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Tony Clark, he is absent. Uh, Mr. Sean Finney.
Here.
Mr. Ryan Doittmeyer.
Here.
And Mr. Kevin Hiramah.
Here.
And I am Michael Lambert. Good evening.
Thank you, Michael. First up, we have public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens requesting placement on the agenda not related to agenda items. First up is Mr. Green. All right. I don't see Mr. Green, so we'll move on to Mr. Drummond.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to talk. Uh, my name's Doug Drummond. I'm the president of Providence at Stonegate HOA. This is my vice president, Adam.
Good evening.
Um, I've got some handouts. Do you guys want me to?
Will you just also say your, uh, address for the record, please?
Yeah, it's 11964 Morgan Street.
Yes.
Anyways, today, uh, I'm here, we represent 180 homes in our neighborhood with about 360 residents, uh, most of which are here tonight, uh, from our neighborhood to support us. Um, we want to discuss an exciting opportunity to significantly enhance the beauty and the ecological health of the Randolph Street Park Pond with the addition of an aeration fountain. Uh, as you know, the land of the pond were generously donated to the town of Winfield by our developer, uh, before we moved in. The HOA did take over responsibility of managing the pond's water health in 2022. Since then, we've invested in the lake and pond biologists. Uh, they do weekly chemical treatments for that water, uh, successfully stabilizing the water quality. We currently budget, uh, about $3,500 annually for chemical treatments and wildlife prevention in all our ponds. So we have a big muskrat problem over there. Controlling that has eliminated most of that.
Have you got them all?
No, we didn't get them all.
I see them every time.
A big decrease here.
Big decrease because, uh, what they told us is you have to eliminate the food source.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you can trap them all day, they just keep coming.
Yeah.
So once you eliminate the food source, they'll go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Hopefully. Uh, in addition of the fountain, it's not merely just aesthetic, but it is a vital tool for long-term pond health. Uh, it's gonna bring the park into line with other premier Winfield neighborhoods, including our neighbors Stonegate and Clover Grove. Um, I'm not gonna get into it too much, but it improves the water quality, reduces the algae, uh, aesthetic appeal, overall beauty, odor and insect control, thermal de-stratification. Uh, so we're asking the town of Winfield to partner with us, uh, on a very small portion of the overall cost, covering the monthly electrical usage of this, uh, gonna be a co-owned asset. Um, so our financial commitment, the capital and operations, uh, we're prepared to fully fund all capital costs and most maintenance associated with a fountain. Uh, a major hurdle we've been facing is securing a separate meter for this project. And Nick joined us once we went out there. We walked the grounds. NIPSCO's kinda given us a lot of pushback on the fact that it is town-owned property and they don't wanna put a meter up that we control on town property. So we've been going back and forth with the engineers. We've sent them all the loadout sheets. Uh, we're just really kinda getting nowhere with them as far as that goes. Um, on the paper I did, uh, pass out, there are specifications for the fountains, how much load they're gonna take, how much draw, but in layman's terms, it's a five horsepower fountain. It equates to like a large pool filter, maybe two small pool filters. Um, basically, this solution will bypass the meter issue and ensures a town-owned asset is going to be powered. Uh, the cost is likely gonna be marginal compared to the significant $25,000 in capital investment that we're going to make for the public park that we're willing to make. Um, to address the request for the town to cover the monthly electrical cost, I did some calculations and estimated a running expense for that five horsepower Aquamaster fountain. Now, this calculation demonstrates the financial ask, which is minimal, especially when viewed against the HOA's capital investment. So the motor power is a five horsepower, I said, it, approximately 4.6 kilowatts. Uh, the operating schedule line, you know, is gonna be about 16 hours a day for six months out of the year. That fountain's only in from April to October. Um, estimated on 15 cents per kilowatt hour, we're looking roughly at about $331 a month. That's, that's an overestimation. I just, you know, at the very most there, it's gonna be less than $2,000 a year, uh, well, for the six months. $19,000 is what our ask would be from the town to cover. Um, this project represents a true public-private partnership that benefits our entire community. The HOA is making a major financial and logistical commitment. We're asking for the town council's approval to proceed with this installation and to commit to covering the minimal ongoing electric operating costs. So with your approval, we'll, uh, allow us to move forward with the $19,765.13 for the fountain, and we need to put 50% down to get it started, and then we're also going to cover the $4,351.53 in electrical work that would obviously begin in the spring. Um, we believe the small investment for the town yields a large dividend in terms of the community aesthetics, environmental stewardship, and a higher-quality public park. So in conclusion, our financial request is a modest commitment by the town, representing a fraction of the cost required to maintain this community asset. Um, the town's request, uh, to cover the electricity bill, I said, was 331.20 per month estimated during the six months of operation over the course of a year. So that's less than $2,000. We believe the minor expense, uh, is a highly leveraged investment, uh, given that the HOA is gonna put up the $24,000, uh, in equipment and installation costs to beautify and sustain the town-owned park is a, is a small investment. So, um, it also solves the administrative burden that NIPSCO's created for us with reluctance to install a separate meter on town property, uh, for the private entity of our HOA. And in addition, we'll invite you all out for the ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
If it gets done. Now, I wanna be upfront and honest, um, we still need to take a neighborhood vote should this decide to move forward, um, before we do anything. So we would need a separate vote. We'd have a separate meeting, um, once the neighborhood says, "Yeah, let's do it." But we already have the money together. Uh, we're ready to go on it. There is, uh, other than the installation, there's, like I said, there was a minimal monthly maintenance fees that could come up. So, um, they, we will cover having it removed and put in, uh, service. Every two years, they recommend a $700 service. We would cover that. And they also say that a lot of these have capacitor issues, like the air conditioning, and those capacitors go out and it's a $300 replacement each time. That would be burdened by us. So...
And one thing, just for reference, Doug mentioned, uh, you know, like other subdivisions, uh, in the neighborhood have fountains. For reference, if you're familiar with the Clover Grove Fountain, um, right off of, uh, Stonegate, that fountain is a 1.75 horsepower fountain, um, and you can still see it pretty well. Uh, the one that we're getting is a five horsepower fountain, so I think he said like a 25-foot, uh, fountain spread essentially over the water. So it'll be something that will be easily visible from the park, uh, without having to like make your way over to the water. So...
And it will have lights on it and everything else. So I'll stand for any questions.
Uh, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I do, I kinda mentioned this to you already. I think it's a great idea. I mean, I appreciate you guys coming. Your presentation was great. You know, it was well-organized, thought out. Um, I think, I agree with you. I think the cost is minimal to add that, just the aesthetic benefit. Everybody goes to the park and just seeing it, it looks nice, you know? I mean, so I think, I agree with that side of it. Um, the one thing I think we probably need to see before a vote is, we probably need some kind of an agreement to delineate who's responsible for what, just to make it clear. And the other thing is, maybe if we could get renderings or just an example of what it's gonna look like. Um, it's procedurally, and, uh, Mr. Doittmeyer could correct me, but I think it probably makes more sense if you guys had all your approval internally with the HOA, and then, then we could vote on it, because then we know you guys are committed. This is what you're gonna do. And then we'll commit. We'll get the legal stuff worked out, whatever we need to do. But just on my side of it, I think you guys did a great job, and I appreciate you coming. I think it's a good, it's a great idea. And this is, I mean, this is stuff that we wanna see, that the community's engaging, they're excited about something, and then find that way for us to partner with you to be able to do it. So...
Just to address that point, we had a, uh, a HOA meeting about a week ago or so, um, where this topic came up and, and we mentioned that we're sending it to the town. Um, our, I think, entire neighborhood has been looking forward to this, so we actually called upon a special meeting. Uh, we just have to set a date, uh, just to vote on this topic, so we could move relatively quickly on getting our internal approval, uh, in place, um, to get back to you, so that way we can, we can make arrangements and absolutely draw something that, that shares responsibility and calls out who pays for what, uh, from a legal perspective. Um, so we'll definitely get back to you probably soon enough.
Yeah, we have, I mean, our next meeting's the ninth, I think, if, I, I mean, assuming there's the votes, right? Um, conceivably, I think we could be able to vote on it in the next meeting as long as everything's buttoned up.
And we have time, 'cause this'll be a spring project.
Right.
So, yeah, we definitely have time, but we'd like to get moving forward. So then, our plan of attack would be, we would get our vote done and then be placed on next month's agenda, assuming we have the A's, and then we would bring it to you for a motion.
Yeah. Okay.
What about drafting the legal instrument agreement?
Well, have, have Ryan, just have Ryan draft.
I mean, they'd need to send it to Dave or myself, and we can take a look at it and negotiate. I mean, I don't know if you guys have legal counsel or who that is, but I'm obviously in there, but obviously we could work that out.
I would just say, Ryan, you go ahead and, and maybe draft it, get a, get Nick, if you could put an email together or collaborate with Nick to get the, the, you know, this. And then have Ryan draft it. As to the separation, that's really the only issue I see, is just making sure.
Yeah, I mean...
I think this handout probably speaks to a lot of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. We'll probably have an increased cost for the, for the cost of the fountain, because these figures are from this past summer.
Yeah.
So every year or so, the, for the price of that does go up. So we'll probably have a higher burden than...
And it's, we're, we're fully funded. We're prepared already. We got the funds, so...
Just from my perspective, conceptually, yeah.
Nothing's...
Yeah. I think it's right.
Yeah, perfect.
And it's another beautiful amenity, so. As you're talking, when you used to mention about Clover Grove, is that like, kinda like the spray pattern you're talking about?
Similar to that. I think there was like nine different spray patterns.
Yeah, yeah. That's a bigger.
And we, we did, we did talk to them about, because it's such a big pond, about having two done, and they recommended just getting one big one. They said the cost of two would be, even two smaller ones would be more than just the one big one. So we got the biggest fountain quote that you can get for a pond.
That'll do enough for your aeration.
Absolutely. And we'll still continue chemically treating it.
Yeah, yeah.
As well.
They can't do a 50-foot?
I mean, I mean, now that we're moving forward with, with, uh, you like, we're going to go ahead and tell, we'll probably spend that money to, to get a bigger one if possible, but...
Yeah. We're just getting, we're just making a geyser at this point. You can see it from wherever. I-65. What is that thing?
Yeah. All right, great.
All right.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And then also, just thanks for getting your community involved and engaged on it. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. All right, we're moving on to minutes to be approved. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special town council meeting of October 7th, town council meeting of October 20th. Motion by Tim. Any second?
A second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. Staff reports. Nick?
Uh, the building department data on the next sheet, uh, finishing out the year pretty strong. The, I don't know if anybody went to the trunk or treat, but I'm told it was a wild success. Thank you to Monica and Iris, Tony who's not here, his staff, for making sure that that was a, a good event at high attendance. And, uh, speaking of events, Christmas tree lighting. Sunday, November 30th, from 4 to 6, here at the Government Center, will be lighting the tree. There'll be music, cookies, Santa.
Hot cocoa.
Hot cocoa. I, I heard the Grinch is gonna be here. I'm hoping the Grinch isn't too bad. Might be. I don't know. I think our police department will handle the Grinch.
Hope so.
That's my report.
Thank you, Nick. Uh, anything from Tony? I don't think so, right? Nick?
Um, the snow event at, like, to publicly commend our public works guys for really staying on top of it, uh, during that really unusual, large, early November.
Yeah, I was, I was out in it. Yeah, I think Zach, you were. Were you out too, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, John? Amy? You guys all? I, I had to go down to the city, and let's just say I started here, and it was all downhill. Once I crossed the line, it was bad.
Only that.
I'm like, what is going on? We only went with plows, but it was bad. But, yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, Nick, I think you and I talked to Tony, and he said they're at 14 hours or something, and that was right after the second round.
Mm-hmm.
So I know they were out basically all day hustling.
Yes.
But it looked good, and I thought they did a great job. So, okay, thanks. Uh, Chief Byrd?
We, uh, previously distributed our activity report for October, and since we last met, we took delivery on two new squad cars, uh, 2025 Ford Interceptors, uh, Explorers, if you will. And we'll be submitting, uh, requests for two more, uh, beginning of the year, as we need to replace the older models in our fleet that are becoming extremely expensive to maintain. And the only other thing, real quick, is that, uh, we had four cars out on the street on Halloween night. Um, we went through the neighborhoods, and, uh, we had lights flashing and whatnot, just being high visibility, and the streets were packed with families having fun, and I think we had just as much fun interacting with everybody. So, uh, it's a great evening here in Winfield. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, guys, for being out there. I appreciate the, uh, the Overwatch. You know, I always, like you said, it was packed, so it's good that you were out there. Uh, Chief Hiramah?
Just real quick, as Kevin's making his way up to the podium. Uh, the Clerk's Office is now occupying, uh, the former Police Department space, so they've completely moved over. Uh, Mike, Enmal, and Kayla are all over here now. So bill payment happens there. There's a new drop box on the outside of the building.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you.
Kevin, sorry.
No problem. Uh, good evening. Uh, you guys should have the call report for last month. Uh, overall, we did a total of 116. Uh, 61 of those were in the town. Um, gotta get caught up with Zach at some point to hopefully finish the conversation on the, updated contract stuff, um, hopefully in the next few weeks. Um, the issue with the truck, uh, with the bad sensor and module was actually just repaired this morning, so it's back up to, uh, good working order. Um, we still have our oldest, uh, pump or tanker out of service. That is still going to be gone, I would think, maybe another month. Um, we're having to unfortunately replace the motor in that. Um, and it's, I believe they're starting that next week. Uh, and once they said they do start it, it's a good two to three weeks before it's back and ready. Um, so I would assume they promised before Christmas, so hopefully that stays on target to get it back. Um, we are still doing CPR classes upon request. We have our search and rescue specialty class scheduled for December, a night, and then a Saturday morning. Um, overall, we had a good time at the trunk or treat. Um, as Nick already mentioned, I think Monica did a fantastic job, and it looked like it was packed again. Um, next year, we've got our golf outing scheduled for July 10th. Um, we do have Stop, Drop, and Donate coming up December 6th. That's Saturday morning from 9 until about 2:30. We're normally out, uh, collecting for the food pantry, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
On to unfinished deferred business. We have the update on 2024-109 in Green Place Roundabout. Sean?
Um, since I talked with Milestone, we did read on all the final qualities, got the final balancing chain order put together. Um, just waiting to receive their final invoice, so should be getting that anytime. So that will, should be on next month's meeting agenda, and then we can get that closed out.
Is there update on the resident issues, the several resident issues over there?
On the...
The sprinklers and stuff?
That's the road project.
Oh, it's, all right. Sorry about that. Yeah, you're right. I was looking at it, just like the wrong line.
Yeah. For that one, um, there's one electric, this is as of early last week, um, there's one electric fence that needed repaired. They called an outside company to come in and fix that, and then there were four sprinkler repairs that they had called a time of irrigation and scheduled them, them to come out. There's one resident they hadn't been able to make contact with, so they were still trying to get them. And then we heard this morning that there was another resident that we thought their sprinkler system was repaired, and they were still having some issues. So I got in contact with Milestone this morning and let them know about that one as well.
Okay, great. Any other update on?
Nope. Just gotta make sure every, one final walkthrough, make sure everything's done once snow's off the ground.
Right. You got a couple days, really.
Yep.
Did they get the strapping done?
Yeah.
So a question, uh, with retainage, how long do we hold that till?
The retainage on...
Let me bounce back. So in spring, they open up their things, and we had killed their sprinkler system before that, and they just find out in spring. Will we still have retainage at that point?
Uh, depends on if we get that one closed out or not.
I don't think you can close them up, though.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna know till the spring. Most of these sprinkler systems are blown out.
Yeah.
And turned off.
The way they went to hold that.
Mine was turned off from May, October.
That's, that's where I was going with. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I was talking about closing out there.
I didn't want anything to surprise you.
Closing out the roundabout, which doesn't have the sprinklers.
Roundabout, yes. But then the CCMG, uh, the 2025 CCMG.
Yeah.
So that, that'll still be open in spring. Thank you.
Very good. On to new business. Public hearing and second reading ordinance 380 for Building Standards. Nick?
Uh, we had a first reading, uh, last month on this. This is kind of a, a series of code updates. Uh, this one in particular deals with construction fencing on active construction sites. We've had issues with, especially in our larger commercial projects in town of just trash blowing all over the place. Um, and people kinda getting into the projects when they're not supposed to be. So it deals, uh, this section, these section updates deal with construction fencing, uh, dumpsters, requirement of kinda keeping the site clean, keeping the trash cleaned up. You know, it's windy around here, so you get a windy day, all of a sudden, the neighborhood is just filled up with trash. So, you know, holding developers accountable, um, including, including the, uh, sort of a standard for portageon placement. That way, there's substantial amount of portageons for all the workers in the neighborhood, and they don't have to get in the truck and drive half a mile to use the restroom. And also to deal with an issue we've had in the past where, uh, people occupy buildings where they have an occupancy. We did not have a fine set in place for that. This establishes that.
Very good.
This is a public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 380 entitled only in ordinance amending Town Code Title 15, Chapter 151, titled Building Regulations, Construction, and specifically amending Sections 151 dot 2 and 151 dot 48, entitled Standards and Certificate of Occupancy Compliance Required, respectively establishing technical revisions to the building standards for the town, and repealing all Town Code Sections, ordinances, or parts thereof in conflict with and all matters related thereto.
Motion by Dave?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. I have number two, public hearing and second reading ordinance 381 for fee schedules.
The last time the town council, uh, really took a look at building fees, uh, across home construction, commercial construction, in town, uh, including the, any sort of zoning applications, uh, related to those initiatives. The best that we could tell is probably in the mid 2000s was the last time those were really touched substantially. Uh, so this updates the building fees and those related applications for any type of project, new construction, remodeling, anything like that that goes on in town.
Very good. We will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? We will close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 381 entitled only in ordinance amending Town Code Title 15, Chapter 150, entitled General Provisions, and specifically amending Sections 150 dot 22, 23, and 24, 25, 26, and 27, entitled Permit Exploration Residential and Ag District Fees Commercial and One, Ag B District Fees, Fire Prevention Bureau Inspection Fees, Crime Commission Fees, Vol. 12, Vol. 13, fees, respectively, uh, establishing technical revisions to the fee schedule requirements and calculations for the town, repealing all Town Code Sections, ordinances, or parts thereof in conflict here with and all matters related thereto.
I'll second. We have a motion by Dave and a second by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have number three, public hearing and second reading ordinance 382 relating to contractor registration.
These are changes to the, as you know, contractors in town are required to be registered. Uh, show proof of insurance, their license bonded, and, uh...
Aye. All opposed? Motion here.
This updates that fee.
Very good.
Went to the Twilight Zone there.
I will open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 382, entitled only in ordinance amending Town Code Title 11, Chapter 111, entitled Building and Construction Contractors, and specifically amending Sections 111 dot 17, 111 dot 18, entitled Residential Exploration and Renewal, and Registration Fees, respectively establishing technical revisions to contractor registration for the town, and repealing all Town Code Sections, ordinances, or parts thereof in conflict here with all matters related thereto.
Motion by Dave?
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries. I have number four, consideration of Town Council Resolution 2025 dash 03, Paid Legal Holidays for 2026.
This is just the paid legal holidays for 2026. No changes?
No change, yeah.
No change, no additional holidays or removal of holidays, just updated the dates, which, uh, they will occur next year.
Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Resolution 2025 dash 3, Resolution Providing for Paid Legal Holidays for the year 2026.
for paid legal holidays for the year 2026. Motion by Tim?
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of adoption of the 2026 meeting schedule for the town council, for, for everybody.
For all town meetings.
Right, yes. And that's it?
It's before you for your consideration.
It's just the schedule.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we adopt the 2026 meeting schedule. Motion by Tim?
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of acceptance of the right-of-way at the southeast corner of Randolph and 125th Avenue.
We had a voluntary dedication of right-of-way at that intersection, it is before you for acceptance.
Very good.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we accept the right-of-way at the southeast corner of Randolph Street and East 125th Avenue.
Motion by Tim?
Second.
Second by Amy, any discussion? Only thing I'll note is it was voluntary, meaning free, according to documents.
Correct, and no cost to the town.
Just wanted to make that clear. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of ambulance rates increase pursuant to ordinance 229-D.
Ambulance rates were set in ordinance 229-D every, and within that ordinance, there was language for 3% increase every year. That calculation has been done, included also is, are the rates for 2026? I have checked them, double-checked them, they are accurate, for the agreement and the ordinance.
Thank you, Nick. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we adopt the ambulance rate increase pursuant to ordinance 229-D.
Motion by Dave?
I'll second that.
Second by John, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to Treasury Report, Mike.
Good evening, after the month of November, for your review, consideration, and approval, we have six pages of claims with a total amount of $1,380,154.55. It should be noted that the lion's share of those claims, the $1,202 milestone was previously approved, but it came back up on the listed claims because a check was cut,
I'll make a motion we pay the claims in the amount of $1,380,154.55.
Motion by John? I'll second. Second by Tim, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Entertain, our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM, here in the Town Hall.
Motion due, John.
By Dave and Tim.